... Act to Promote Minimum Wage Consistency. Before we get started, there was just a little confusion regarding how this hearing had perhaps given enough advertising time. And I just wanted to assure everyone that the two-week notice regarding public hearings was waived on April 1st by the presiding officers for all committees, which happens every legislative session because our work starts to get condensed toward the end, which is very normal practice. And so basically, we just need, we notified the public a week ago, and it was in this weekend's paper, which is the requirement that is consistently in place. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware, that we were all square there. And thank you for being here. Senator Cushing, he's here, so, bill sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize, I was in judiciary, another testimony, and so I'm very appreciative of your flexibility. Today, I am before you, I am Senator Andre Cushing from Hampden, I represent 15 communities in southern Hopsack County. I bring you a bill, LD 1361, an act to promote minimum wage consistency. I provided you with my written testimony, I'd just like to focus on a few highlights of it. This seeks to achieve a statewide consistency in our minimum wage. It's not a question of whether the minimum wage should be increased, it's the question of who should have priority in establishing this for the consistency, for the ability to assure that wage and hour issues, questions by employers or employees, enforcement is handled in an appropriate manner. I think what this bill proposes to do in leveling the playing field for both employers and employees is to recognize that it's not just the hourly wage employee that is affected here, it is a number of benefits and services associated with their wages that are calculated. And when you have certain employers who have multiple locations, and in today's market you have many companies that employ people who may rotate between their different locations, you can imagine the complications that could be created in having a patchwork of different minimum wage hourly pay scales in this state. And I think we need to reflect on the policies that we implement here and what we do to help assure that the best opportunities for entry-level personnel are provided, because really, the minimum wage is about people being able to enter the workforce, be able to gain the skills, the training, and the experience that can help to make them more valuable in the workplace, and have the opportunity to grow both their personal income, their personal self-worth, and their ability to move from position to position. This bill would give the state the ultimate position in determining what the minimum wage for entry-level positions in Maine would be. Following me will be members of the administration and others who will outline some of the legalities, administrative issues, and fairness rationale as to why this bill deserves your consideration. Many times in the legislature, we talk about consistency and fairness, and I present this bill to you in that vein. So I thank you very much for both the patience of waiting for me and for the opportunity to present this today. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, but I can assure you that there are some other testimonies that were in the more of the dynamics that could answer your questions.
Representative.
I just can't resist this question, Senator Cushing. So, we hear a lot about local control and about those kinds of issues, you know, and I'm just curious where I would expect, and I heard that argument from you on the committee, why is it that in this instance, that you don't think global control, if the state won't do it, why shouldn't a municipal entity be able to do it?
I appreciate what you're saying, and it's a valid question to ask, because it does trump the ability of local municipalities to enforce things, but there are a number of issues in the state, when you think about it, that giving local control, when you're not dealing exclusively with entities that are within your locality's purview, may adversely affect the implementation of those laws, and not allow for the proper enforcement or oversight. I mean, in this case, if some of the communities considering this change their own minimum wage, the state will not be obligated to be involved in disputes related to wage and hour issues. It will be the responsibility of those municipalities. How are we providing fairness as a state if local municipalities have superseded the what wage and hour requirements here, but are not in a position to provide the oversight and the proper protections for employees if they have questions on wage and hour issues? I think that's a concern.
You're assuming that they won't be able to do that. That's just an assumption that you're making. You don't know that they haven't factored that in already into what they know they're going to have to do to enforce that at their level, because they enforce a lot of different ordinances. I'll use the fireworks ordinance, which was written in a state way so that municipalities could decide whether, A, they want to sell the fireworks, or they want to use the fireworks. So my community decided, well, we'll sell them, but you can't use them, which I didn't agree with, but, you know, I'm just saying that we have to enforce that. However difficult it is, that's our choice. So, just seems to me that this bill really is the ultimate in taking any kind of local control away from municipality.
Well, I think that you certainly have the right to have your opinion on this. I think when we talk about issues related to employers, and particularly employers outside the jurisdiction, the municipality that may implement something, you create a lot of difficulties, potential conflicts, that can't be handled on a town-by-town basis or a region-by-region basis. You're talking about national, as well as statewide, employers who are going to be faced with questions in regards to this issue, as to, you know, when do you determine that somebody is to be paid this wage in this job? How do I determine that my wage scale for this one store should be different? There's going to be some fairness issues between the employees who start in these different companies, there are going to be conflicts that we're going to create, and it's different than a commodity product that we may sell, and there's a transaction beginning and end. This is an ongoing relationship with employees, and again, it's employees coming into the workforce, many of them that do not have a deep skill set. I mean, the minimum wage is meant, in many cases, to be an ability to train new employees as they come into the workforce, and be able to invest in people, make the commitment as an employer to recognize that I've got to give somebody an opportunity. It may be a younger person, it may be somebody first coming into the workforce. This is an opportunity to get into the workforce, recognizing there'll be some time to learn the skills, to learn the system of our business, and when we start to inflict upon them a different wage scale, now you're creating potentially different classes of people within the same company. And I think that's an unfair position to put some of these employers in.
Representative Campbell, then Representative Ecto, then Representative Gilbert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator.
Representative.
You know, as well as I do, that you and the whole group is anti-worker. What you're trying to do now is dictate to the cities and towns. Don't you think that this administration has enough on their plate? They're trying to get and start telling the cities and towns what they can do and what they can't do?
In addition to the fact that I won't question your motives and question my motives, I think we have the right to protect the employers and the workers. This is not a question of whether or not the minimum wage should go up, it's how do you implement proper policy in this state?
What do you mean your motives? I'm asking you a question.
No, you made a statement, sir.
All right, then I'll ask you a question.
Thank you.
Do you have any problem with the unions, with the working people in this state?
I do not, sir.
You don't?
I have philosophical differences on how we implement certain things, but I think I have the same respect for them that you may for some of the causes that I believe in, and I think that when we're talking about this issue, we're not talking about minimum wage and what it should be, but we're talking about whether a municipality should be in first position to determine what the minimum wage should be.
Well, what you should be doing is working on the state level, you're a state senator, and let the cities and towns, and the managers, and the mayors, and everybody else run their business. And let the people of the towns or the city that elects these mayors and that, if they don't like what they're doing, let them vote them out, and let not the state of Maine be dictated to them.
Representative Ecto.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Senator Cushing, for being here. I'm curious as to why, and perhaps you can answer this, this bill seeks to obviously address sort of a, what I would say is continuity thing, or seems to address having a blanket minimum wage for the entire state. I assume the state, and I know the state has businesses that operate not just in Maine, but also across the country, there's a federal minimum wage that is different from the state minimum wage. So why doesn't this bill seek to bring the minimum wage down to the federal minimum wage in order to make sure we're consistent with what the federal minimum wage is?
Bear in mind that this is a matter not questioning what the minimum wage should be, but who has the authority? And there are other states that have implemented this. There are certainly, and I don't want to, unless we want to go down that road with some of the folks who may be following me, you have the representatives of the governor's office that could, as an attorney, probably answer some of the legal questions much better than I could, and someone from the Department of Labor in regards to the implementation of wage and hour issues that we've got to be more appropriately taught to some of the real-life issues. I can only speak as a business owner who employs people and has to do the proper bookkeeping. I can see a tremendous nightmare that could adversely affect the ability for certain people to get entry-level positions in companies in some of these communities because of the fairness issue. If you've got employees starting with your company, whether you're in retail, manufacturing, any fields where you might offer some of these, and bear in mind, one other important factor, Department of Labor statistics that we heard shared with us during the minimum wage debate show that less than 20, than 1% of the people over 25 years of age are receiving minimum wage. It is generally younger individuals entering the workforce without significant skill sets, sometimes part-time jobs that are considered, in many of these cases, to start at minimum wage. So we may adversely affect a subset of the workforce that would want to start in certain communities that may not have opportunities offered to them, because the starting wage may require them to look for people with a higher level of skill set or more experience to begin in the workforce. While this may be well-intentioned, I think the ability to implement this will have consequences. The market will respond to what the costs are, because labor is a major factor in the cost of operating businesses, and lower-margin businesses are going to have to make decisions.
Representative.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess I'm trying to clarify, part of your argument was that if a company is operating, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not correctly saying this, but part of your argument seemed to be that if a company is operating in one town, and also as part of their company, another town, one town increases the minimum wage, the other town keeps it consistent with the state minimum wage, you believe that that would create some troubles for the, from a management perspective for that company, because they have to operate with two minimum wages? Is it not also true that there are companies operating within the state of Maine that operate elsewhere as well, maybe just across the border into New Hampshire, where we have two different minimum wages? They seem to have been able to handle that. So I guess I'm trying to understand how there could be a management problem when the minimum wage is different in every state, and there's also different minimum wages that have been passed in different cities, such as Seattle, for example.
I think that's a valid question, as you may or may not be aware, the Seattle issue is before the courts, so that's not yet fully been implemented. I think the issue as it relates to states by state versus municipality by municipality is a very different factor. When you're operating within a state entity, and you have a, whether it's a component of your business, it's a multinational, or even a locally-owned business, it may have different states, you're probably hiring people within those regions who work exclusively within those offices or operations that you have. So there's a different factor. I actually have worked in jobs, not entry-level jobs, that have taken me to different states, and there are different factors that affect your work and what you can and can't do in the course of your job. But most of the HR departments, if they are working in different states, have accommodated, they have their filings in place with those states. You're now talking about a totally different set of reporting requirements that are going to be necessary, because the state is not going to take responsibility for enforcing the wage and hour issues in these municipalities that have created different wage and hour scales. So you're complicating the process, which again, gets back to the question of whether we're helping or hurting people at an entry-level rate by creating artificial, and I don't mean that in any way to disrespect the efforts of people who believe in increasing the minimum wage, but this is the implementation, it's not the question of what it should be. If we're going to have this debate, I think it's healthier for the business climate, for the ability of people to employ people in these entry-level jobs, to do it on a statewide basis, so you've got that continuity. And then we can have the debate ultimately of what we want to do here in the state of Maine in regards to the base wage.
Okay. Representative Gilbert, then Senator Patrick, then Representative Ward.
Madam Chair, my question goes, kind of parallels, because some of the fact goes. I live in western Maine, and we have companies that are based in western Maine that have outlets in New Hampshire. And starting wage at minimum wage in Maine is $7.50 an hour, and I think New Hampshire is $7.25. According to your testimony here, it says, imagine an employee that has multiple locations in different communities, how would they adjust their base scale? Do you think that these Maine companies that are prosperous are having a difficult time with the two minimum wages? And do you think that the workers starting at minimum wage in New Hampshire have morale problems because their counterparts in Maine are making 25 cents an hour or more?
I think that in total context of what happens in New Hampshire versus Maine with personal income tax, they already start with an 8% pay raise over what we get here in Maine. Bear in mind that when you take money out of a worker's pocket, the amount that they have at the end of the week is more significant than what they start at.
But you're saying that this is going to cause problems for the employees in the different locations, which I don't see. If you have room for this, or have somebody tell you this, or, and also, have you received word from these companies in western Maine that they are having a difficult time figuring out what the minimum wage is for an employee? I don't, I don't understand that.
I understand. Working in the career field, I'm sure you're familiar with some of the different dynamics of employing individuals in various capacities. When you're talking about intrastate versus interstate, there's a very different dynamic to that. Intrastate, having a series of communities that do this, without an overall agency that can implement the proper reporting requirements, the proper forms, you're creating a morass for businesspeople, and if they can't justify investing in people to work in that, because you've got to factor the costs of administration into the labor costs, and if you can't do it, then you're adversely affecting the people that might work in some of those communities that have chosen to implement their own wage. Now, the question about companies, obviously, I have no data at this point, because no one in this state has initiated a successful effort to raise a minimum wage. Once that's in place, it will manifest itself. When you start to look at what happens between states interstate, you have state agencies who provide the training, the forums, the support that allows employers to understand how to properly document, and they have, in many cases, divisions or components that will work with that. It may be a bookkeeping or human resources company in that state that they hire, they may have a division of their own office to do it, but as an employer, if I had entry-level people starting, and I have to factor that my out-of-pocket expense, not what the employee ultimately makes, but my out-of-pocket expense is higher, I'm going to consider very strongly whether it's worth the risk to continue to operate a business in that locale. That's my opinion.
And there are some companies that are in Maine, and they employ people in Portland, and they also have businesses in Franklin County, and they employ people there. They don't see, the ones that are paid in Portland are paid a greater wage than the ones in Franklin County, and I don't see, and I haven't heard of any employer that's having a hard time to manage this.
Well, are we talking about minimum wage-level employees represented?
I'm talking about, I'm talking about that anyway. I'm trying to just figure out your statement here, where it says, the middle of the second paragraph that wants us to imagine an employer, an employer that has multiple locations in different communities, somehow they're looking a hard time with us, and I just can't see it.
Okay. Well, I respect your concern, and I hope that someone from Department of Labor may be able to give you some further enlightenment in regards to that issue, because it is valid.
Representative Ward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I thought it was Senator Patrick.
Thank you, sir.
The change is mine.
He's spending his ass and feet to death.
Thank you, sir.
We're managing things well right here.
You are. I apologize for that.
I'm glad everyone's worried about it.
Good afternoon, Senator, and thank you for gracing us with your presence.
Thank you.
Keep your chair.
He's on this committee.
I know. That's why I'm saying it. Two quick questions, they're pretty easy. The first one is, you mentioned the Seattle situation, you mentioned it's in court. Have we seen any negative impacts of having a different wage mandate for Seattle as opposed to the rest of the state of Washington, to your knowledge? And then also, you also made the statement that the state could not, would not be regulating this, should a certain municipality opt to go with a different wage mandate than the statewide wage mandate. Can you elaborate on that, how you know that could be the case? Assuming this being really well?
Well, I believe, thank you for your question. I believe in regards to the Seattle issue, everything right now is anecdotal, because it has not been fully rolled out, so the question of whether it will or has impacted is only based upon some of the sparring that's going on in the meeting. There are companies, particularly food service, that have been highlighted in news articles that are saying that they are closing. Some of those have been debated because of the question of whether they are transitioning from one line to another. I think it's going to take a period of time, baseline check when you start versus when you get to a point where the minimum wage has been increased, and what the impacts have been that can be measured through more scientific measures, going to the Department of Labor there, or with the wage and hour division, and determining what has happened with some of these entry-level, what may have happened to the population in certain business sectors. In regards to this issue and what we're talking about, again, remember, it's not the question of what the wage should be, just who should implement the oversight and the base level for that wage? And if we, if we empower communities to do that, then they are going to have to take on responsibilities for the implementation and the tracking, because that's not something, from what I have been heard with, and I believe there'll be someone following me that will testify in front of the Department of Labor as to what some of the complications would be, and why the state would not feel in a position to enforce different wage and hour rates in the state of Maine for municipalities. It's getting into a local ordinance, as I understand it, versus state statute. So there are some complications as it relates to issues that are local ordinances. I don't know if I fully answered all your questions or not.
Representative Ecto, then Representative Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My last question for the good senator.
I like the new look, by the way.
Thank you. If this were, if this were something where a community voted by referendum at the local level to pass and erase the minimum wage, not the city council deciding, but local people by vote at the ballot, not for the whole state, but just for their community, first of all, does this bill prevent that? And secondly, is that the intent? Is that what you guys, what the folks that are advocating for this bill would like to see, that local people in mass going to the ballot box by majority, not being able to decide whether or not their community raises the minimum wage?
I appreciate the question. Whether it would be through a legislative body of a community or through a referendum process, the outcome would be the same. The question of who would implement the wage and hour requirements subjected to that referendum, if the citizens of a town want something, I strongly believe that their ability to speak to local policy should be respected, as in the case of South Portland, when they had a referendum on the pipeline, and they voted not to have a moratorium. You had the municipal council that chose to put a moratorium in place anyway. I think that's unfortunate. But when you're influencing things without the borders of your community. In real estate, we learn very early on that the concept of real estate includes what is referred to as a bundle of sticks, a bundle of rights. Historically, before they had documents, they used to go to trees in the property, cut branches off, and wrap that, and hand that over to the person who took ownership of that. That was their bundle of rights. In real estate today, that includes not only the physical buildings on your property and the land under it, but it might be mineral rights, it might be water rights, it may be right-of-way to access other properties. When we talk about this issue of citizens passing a referendum, they are gathering to themselves certain rights within the municipality, but they're trying to enforce those rights outside of the boundaries of what their due process might be, to inflict upon a company that does not reside in that community, or individuals who work for a company that may be based there in other locations. We haven't even addressed whether your home office would impact whether all employees who work for you outside of that at other stores should be eligible for that same rate. We're creating a number of questions here that ultimately, I think, may end up, if not considered in the legislation before us, may end up having to go to court. So you're inflicting upon those individuals and the businesses the potential of legal action to determine something that was not maybe as well thought out at the municipal level when we were talking about raising it. And I think the implementation process is really a responsibility for us at the state level to take account of.
Representative Campbell, then Senator Patrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're talking about questions, if you're, whether, yeah, the next question comes down to enforcement of wage and hour matters in response to questions or concerns of the employer-employer. The state will not be in a position to enforce local ordinances. The cities and towns are not seeing the enforcement. They implement something, I would expect they didn't do the enforcement. And then the next sentence is, this will require the municipality, who may choose to exceed the state minimum wage, to create a department personnel, cover center wage and hour matters to address these questions and concerns. What's their problem? It's not the state's problem, so I don't know why you're concerned about it, Senator. Do you, do you tell me why you're concerned about it?
I think we've addressed it, but if we need to again, you're talking about employees that may not work in the community in which this wage has been increased. They may work for a company that's based there. Now you have a conflict between a local and a state ordinance. The question becomes, how are you going to properly enforce that? Within a municipality, you may have one location for a business. How are you going to effectively determine the person who has worked there being compensated based upon the wages that are due in that town at an entry level versus the next town over, where they may also be working for the same company? There's a variety of issues here that go beyond the scope of what that municipality may be in a position to enforce.
Well, if they get into it, they better be prepared to be able to run the show themselves.
Well, I, I.
And you should ask them, you should ask them.
I don't think it's my responsibility as a state senator to ask another district. I don't represent either of the communities that currently have this issue before them.
Well, I also don't think you should be getting into home rule.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Patrick.
So, thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, I'm assuming, because you're putting this bill in now that municipalities can do this now legally, and so you're putting the bill in on behalf of the governor to not allow this to happen?
That's correct. The chief executive asked for this legislation, and I agree to be the sponsor of it. The chief executive asked for this legislation, and I agree to be the sponsor of it.
Seeing no further questions for the senator? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else that wishes to testify in favor? LD 1361.
Thank you. Senator Wolk, Representative Hurd, and members of the committee. I'm Cynthia Montgomery, and I am chief legal counsel for Governor Paul LaPage. I'm here to urge you to support LD 1361, an act to promote minimum wage consistency. As the senator said earlier, we're not here to talk about raising, lowering, doing anything to the minimum wage itself. I know that there have been at least eight bills this session regarding an increase in the minimum wage, and we've heard extensive testimony on that issue. This bill concerns that topic, and as he said, this bill directs who has the authority to regulate the minimum wage. It's a preemption bill. The preemption is a legal doctrine. It arises from the supremacy clause of the U.S. Constitution. Federal law often preempts state law, state law often preempts local law. When a local law is inconsistent with a state law, and both laws attempt to regulate one particular field, then the state law would preempt, under this particular bill, the state law would preempt or override a local law. It's not about setting the minimum wage again, it is about who has the authority to do it. It's the governor's position that you, the main state legislature, should set and regulate the area of minimum wage, not multiple local governments, some of whom may have competing interests. This bill promotes consistency and predictability for business operations, and those are the intended purposes of the bill. The governor does understand the desire to help Maine workers earn more money, but he doesn't agree that the way to do it is through local governments setting different minimum wage rates for different jurisdictions. He's convinced that there are two risks that inconsistent wages will foster. One is the increased cost of doing business, which the senator talked about, and two are additional administrative burdens, and you will hear more about that from our representative from the Department of Labor this afternoon. With regard to increased costs, some increased costs will drive or may drive some businesses out of cities and towns that require higher wages, and/or lead those businesses to hire fewer workers altogether. This is especially critical in Maine, a state whose economy relies heavily on small and locally-owned businesses, which cannot absorb such increased costs within their existing resources and budgets and still remain competitive. Leaving the regulation of minimum wage to multiple local governments will actually discriminate against local businesses, smaller businesses, because their larger competitors are more able to absorb increased costs, like the increased labor costs or the increased costs in administrative operation. By promoting consistency and predictability, this bill will help preserve Maine's competitiveness and prevent Maine from setting up pockets of uncompetitive areas within the state. When businesses are expanding or considering relocating to a location like Maine, one of the things they need to know is that there is predictability with regard to their costs. The potential for different wage rates in different locations cuts down on that predictability. With regard to increased administrative burdens, there is an impact on the businesses as well as on the towns, and Senator Cushing talked some about the impact on the towns. There also could be impacts on these businesses as well. Inconsistent minimum wage rates, we believe, will also cause increased burdens within situations where businesses cross jurisdiction lines. As Maine continues to recover from the recent crippling recession, it doesn't need the kind of unpredictability that inconsistent wage rates will bring. Decisions about who should set the minimum wage should be handled at the state level because the impacts of inconsistent wage rates will be felt statewide. I want to encourage the committee to engage in thoughtful deliberation and protect the prospects of employers and employees alike by encouraging minimum wage consistency. Risking the loss of small businesses means risking the loss of jobs, and that's an outcome that none of us want. I want to urge the committee to vote, opt to pass on LD 1361, and I'm willing to try to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Any questions from the committee? Representative Ecto, then Representative Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I hope you'll indulge me, Madam Chair, I have a few questions. First and foremost, Mrs. Montgomery, do you know that property taxes are set by local municipalities?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know that different municipalities have different property tax rates?
Yes.
So that's one of the expenses I assume that a company would assume when they move to a municipality, is that one municipality might have higher property taxes than another? That's probably true as well. So I guess I think it's some confused as to how the governor's office is opposed to erase the minimum wage, but doesn't support or hasn't proposed that we have a flat property tax across the state. Can you explain sort of some of the rationale behind that?
Well, I don't know if I can explain the rationale between those two situations that you're talking about, but I can say that it is the governor's position that consistency with regard to the regulation of wages is what's important. Again, the bill is not about whether to raise it or not raise it. The option to raise it would still exist. The only way to promote consistency, though, is to have one body regulate that area. That's the only way to achieve consistency, and that really is the point of the bill, is to achieve consistency and predictability to the extent that we can.
Representative Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You said one body.